All right, I call this November 8th meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Are there any changes to the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And the minutes from last month? Any comments or corrections? Hey, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Onto new business subdivision Stonecrest Meadows.
Our preliminary plat this evening, I'm Marion Ray, zoning planner for York County. We have one preliminary plat this evening, Stonecrest Meadows. We do have the engineer here if there are any questions, but this one is very straightforward. This property is between 161 and 321, just north of Philbeck Road off of Smith Road. It may look a little bit familiar because the lots coming off of Smith Road were Phase 1 of Stonecrest Meadows. Phase 2 is the residual lot behind and a lot to the north here. The preliminary plat, north is to the right, it's turned, make it a little easier for the drafter to write it, but it gets a little confusing if you're not sure which way is north. You do have three cul-de-sacs here. There's one to the south, one to the west, and one to the north. The property is bounded by several different neighbors here, and there's a stream on the kind of northwest side around to the north of the property. So going through our findings here, it will be serviced by private wells and septic systems, and they will have to have a dehack permit before they can be final platted. The single-family residential isn't allowed use in RUD zoning. There is no density requirement in RUD zoning, but FYI, the density is .61 residential units per acre. There was a Tier 2 TIA completed on this, no mitigation was required in the area. The development is partially bounded and accessed to the east by the existing Phase 1 of Stonecrest Meadows, and it was bounded to the west-north by a creek and some other single-family residential area lots to the west. And sidewalks are not required in Stonecrest Meadows due to the low-density style of development. They're all one acre. No open space is required, nor is it provided. It is in RUD, but it's outside the urban services boundary. That's the one caveat to open space. They do provide a little more than 20 acres of tree save area, and then a tree survey has been performed and accepted by staff. We do not have any recommended conditions, but staff does recommend approval.
Are there any questions of staff? If there are no questions, do we have a motion?
A motion that we approve according to staff recommendations.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that looks like that's unanimous. Item 2, rezoning 21-20.
All right, rezoning 21-20, this is Tim Heeline, 21-20 Coatharp Road in Fort Mill, tax map 71400023. So they want to rezone almost 10 acres from AGC to LI. They want to put two 33,000 square foot flex buildings. A flex building meaning it could be office, could be warehouse, something you might see along Carowinds Boulevard, for example. They want to put two of those along that property. Location of the property, it fronts I-77 and Coatharp Road. To the south you have the Shutterfly facility, and to the north you have some, there's some mobile homes up there. Here's the aerial showing the Shutterfly and the interstate. Nothing to speak of here. So the zoning, it's originally zoned AGC, so that's outdated zoning district from, you know, 1987, or outdated for this area at least. So it still has some AGC in the area, expect that to transition over time. Got the LI to the south for the Shutterfly, so the LI that's being proposed would be consistent with the Shutterfly property, adjacent to it as well. So future land uses I-77 corridor employment, so any kind of employment, so it could be light industrial, could be office, would be consistent with the plan in this area. And you can see that the neighborhood residential is on the opposite side of the road, and Haber Sham is over there. Proposed site plan showing the two buildings and the parking. So it's I-77 corridor employment, so that's employment, we're trying to attract the target industries of regional or state value. Whether or not these will be that, it's to be determined. I mean, they haven't been leased out or anything, but they could be. But these facilities are something you would typically see along an interstate. So we recommend approval of the request. It's consistent with the I-77 corridor employment designation of the conference and plan. There's job creation for sure. We don't know if that's going to be regional or statewide, but it could be. And these are appropriate for the property because of the butt Shutterfly to the south. There's no residential within that immediate area except for across the street. There's no residential within that quadrant. Just some mobile homes across the street. Any questions?
A couple of questions. So we don't know what type of businesses will be going in there?
No, we just know that it could be office, it could be light industrial. The zoning is light industrial.
And do we know if it could be 24-hour operation? Would it be normal 9 to 5, 8 to 5?
I mean, that's something that could be conditioned, but no, we don't know.
And I see based on the site plan, it looks like, I mean, possibly customer or employee parking in the front, and what I'm assuming might be loading docks in the back? Is that that second entrance?
With a flex building, you know that there may or may not be loading docks. I mean, this is something that could be split up into smaller units, and they may not need a loading dock. I mean, I don't know, I'm not the developer. It may or may not have it.
Is the developer here?
So he may be able to speak for that.
Okay. Are you familiar, sir, with what would be going in in terms of? Just a moment, if you could step up to the mic, state your name and address for the record? Thank you.
Evening, Tim Heeline. My address is 1830 Hansmill Highway. So the fellows that want to develop this, they own a large HVAC business in Charlotte, and they've got some other flex space throughout the county. And flex spaces is sort of like storage unit buildings, but on steroids. You can make them small or big. They might use half, they might lease out half, they might lease it all out. They don't have a specific user or a use set up yet. Though, most likely, that's a, that's, that area's in high demand for flex space. And the projects that they've done in the past, I've been involved in three of them, selling the properties, these guys go way over and above the call of duty on their product and what they have to do. One of the partners is a, he's an incredible neat freak in detail, and it'll be a drop-dead gorgeous flex space facility up there. And it'll be whatever clients they get in, there will be high-end rent or high. There'll be liking-kind users in there.
I'm a little concerned because, you know, staff is saying that really there's no residential, but there is. There's a large, nice subdivision directly across, well, almost directly across the street. So I worry a little bit about noise, I worry a little bit about light pollution.
Most likely, it won't be any louder or quieter than Shutterfly.
Yeah, but Shutterfly is buffereded quite extensively from Coatharp.
This is buffered by the highway, by the road, by trees. If you look where those buildings would go, and if they were going to have, if they were going to have loading docks, I don't know. You can only get so much back there, and it's not even 10 acres, it's 9.0.
No, I understand, but the front corner of that building is right up on Coatharp, so.
I don't think you're going to hear anything.
Directly across the street from that is the backside of that neighborhood. So that's a concern to me. I guess that's where my question is, particularly in terms of, you know, hours of operation and noise. Because if you're talking about the type of stuff that's up near Carowinds, sometimes that runs 24 hours a day, and those semis are backed up.
Like I said, they have a large HVAC business, not a production business. They do commercial HVAC. I don't know if they're going to, they have a large building in Charlotte. They might lease that out and move there. They don't know, the land became for sale. This is what they do, they do first-class operators, and they said that, you know, we want to do this. We met with, or we talked with Diane, we didn't, I don't think we met.
Sure.
There'll be a great owner there.
Appreciate the feedback. I guess I'm just concerned that there aren't any specifics, so to change it to light industrial seems a little scary to me.
Well, that's just the zoning code that you have in place. You know, that's, that's, that's the slot we have to fit in.
Is that true, Diane? That's what they, that's what they requested.
I had, I had several, yeah, we had several people, and we also wanted to do commercial out the corners because it's going to make a, you know, a road going in there, and would made the land a lot more valuable. But that didn't, that didn't make sense for what the county wanted. And, you know, we said, okay, that's fine, then let's, we talked about it, we said, well, then let's do the, let's do the LI for flex space.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah. You had said there's an HVAC company that's looking at typically.
No, 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 the developers also own a large commercial HVAC business. They have, they have a large flex space place in Charlotte. I don't, I forget the name of the road. And they haven't said that, oh, we're going to move our business there. I'm saying they could.
You just said it a couple of minutes ago.
No, I said they could, they could consider it. I'm not saying they're moving their business there, Matt. I said they, they might, they could, they could get someone who wants to lease their place or buy their place in Charlotte. They might say, you know what, let's, let's move it down there, we have it down here. That hasn't been discussed, I just know how these guys, I know how they roll. They're action junkies, and they go where they're going to do more of this flex space product in Charlotte, or Mecklenburg County and New York County.
It only seems like a portion of the property is being developed. Is there anything else that's planned?
Not that I know of, not that I'm aware of.
Are they lobbying for a on-ramp?
No, no.
Because I know that that's been asked of SCDOT in the past.
Put a condition in there, no on-ramp, there's zero desire for that. They don't want to, they're not at all.
An interchange.
Contemplate, they don't want to go for an on-ramp or an off-ramp. They have zero desire for that. They just want to build some flex space buildings and.
I saw on the, on the posting on, I think, your website, that you know that Shutterfly would like to connect with them, with that piece of property?
I don't think that's on my website, but no, so.
It's on the list, it's on the listing.
Okay, what I did originally is I, when I list, I sell a lot of land, and what I always do is, when I list a property, I always go to the neighbor that's contiguous, front, side, back, and say, hey, you got an opportunity to buy land that's next to you, you should probably do it because you don't get a second chance, even if you pay more for it, you average it. So we went and met with Shutterfly, and I think, was that a county request or did I? I don't remember the details, but, so I met with them to give them first shot at it. And it made, we talked about having connectivity to get all that traffic off of Shutterfly and everything going out to the, you know, out to the highway. Well, Shutter, so we, Shutterfly doesn't own their building. Investment company does, and they, Shutterfly leases it. So we had conversations with the owners of the, of the biz, of the property, and then also with Shutterfly, but it didn't make sense to. Nobody wanted to spend the money connected because you have a drawdown in there. It'd be pretty cost prohibitive, I believe, to make that happen. But they don't, these folks that want to buy it have zero desire to connect through there. They just want to build their flex space buildings and move on.
Thank you.
Not move on, they would, they're both from the area, but just to do their thing.
Diane, what's the, what's the limitation on outdoor storage?
In LI, I do not believe it's allowed.
I think you have to be under roof.
Yeah, in LI, it's part of the inside.
You have to be under roof.
Yes.
Yeah, Matt, they have no intention of storing on that extra land. They might come back later if they get a, if they get somebody that says, hey, can we do another, whatever, can we do another building over there? Then they'd have to come back to y'all and, you know, request that.
Okay, I have a concern about the, the size of Coatharp Road, and if this business was something that potentially could have trucks, not just HVAC, a little basic truck, but I mean, transfer trucks going in and out, bringing equipment. I, I think that road, there might be a problem, and it concerns me with the development across the street, especially in the morning with school buses, using that road for Haber Sham.
I think that Haber Sham, their, their entrance is down the road a little bit, but we had a, we had to do a TIA, and we did that, and I believe it came back fine. And.
For what you think that they're going to put, see, this is the thing, I don't know what they're going to put in.
Flex spaces like, like, like building a spec house. Developers come in and they mass grade and they ch-ch-ch-ch, put all these houses up, and they don't know who's buying them.
But you know, but you know what residential traffic normally is?
Yeah.
You don't know with this building what it's going to be.
I think that's why we had to do.
I don't know if it's going to be transfer trucks or box trucks, or it could be 14 doctors offices, and I guess that's the difference.
The TIA.
Yeah, and that was based on manufacturing. So we chose that as the use for this, for the TIA, was manufacturing. That would get you a pretty good high number of trips if we chose, we chose, that's why we chose that one. The Tier 1 TIA, and there was no mitigation required.
For the record, I didn't say they're moving their HVAC business. I'm saying they own a commercial HVAC business. They, in the future, they might want to, depending on what happens. I don't, I don't, I'm not speaking for them on that, that part of it.
And just to clarify, when you said they could put another building there, they'd have to come back before us. I don't believe that that's correct. If it's zoned LI, they, is that correct? They can just put another building?
That's right, yeah, if it's zoned LI, as long as they can meet the buffer requirements, parking requirements, they can build more buildings. And they, I mean, they've put two on, they're probably, it's all they can put on there, based upon the parking requirements, and so they probably could put anything more on there anyway.
And normally I balk at going from something like AGC to LI, it's such a huge change, but I don't see this property ever being used agricultural again, so.
No.
I mean, it kind of, I understand the need for a change. It's just a little concerning if you don't know.
Well, what we wanted to do was, I had, I had probably a dozen calls from developers or building companies that wanted to do density in there. They wanted to do apartments in the back, and then if they run a road in there, that makes two, two corners, and they wanted to do, you know, like a commercial, one and a half acre commercial on this side, one and a half on this side, and do apartments or townhomes or something in the back. And that wasn't going to fly with, with getting it rezoned to that. And I, they understood, they didn't like it, they would have gotten more money, but they understand that, and that's why I'd be, I worked pretty close with Diane, and that's, we talked about what's the best use there, and that's, that's what makes good sense there.
So with LI buffering, how much buffering would they need along Coatharp there?
For Coatharp, it's a probably 20-foot buffer, maybe a 10. And when they come in, they'll, they'll be coming in under recode, so that will be changing as well. So it might be more substantial.
Okay, so when we recode, this changes as well, not because it came in before?
Exactly, because we don't have any site plans in yet, so that'll actually affect the site plan process.
Okay, good to know. Do we have any further questions of the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Heeline.
All right, thanks a lot, appreciate, appreciate your time.
Do we have a motion? Do we have any other questions of staff?
Can you clarify for me the buffer situation? Because I'm concerned about the corner of that building, and I know that there are some established trees at the front of that property, but if that all comes out, and plus where they're wanting to put this, there's no buffer, none. And it really does back up directly to the neighborhood at that corner.
Actually, that corner looks like it goes closer to where the.
No, I'm sorry, the, the corner at the, where the parking is, is the one that basically, directly across the street.
And they, I mean, they're required to do a site plan as an idea of what could possibly go on here, how it actually could fit. They're not bound to this site plan, so it'd come in differently. So, I mean, they don't, this may not be the best location, the right, the right location for it. It might move over based upon the, the topography and a variety of things, but this is more just kind of get an idea of what could possibly go on there. You know, they will leave a lot of the trees that are along 77, it looks like, by putting it there, which provides that nice buffer from them. That one corner, the setback off of Coatharp Road is, will be for, what's that? 30, 30 feet off of Coatharp Road is the setback. And it might, is it same in recode, it'd go the same direct, same size? Yeah.
But if this is coming in off of Coatharp, it looks like it goes straight back off of Coatharp towards Shutterfly.
It does.
Away from that neighborhood.
Right, I'm just worried about noise or light pollution. I mean, there are no established trees there. Because right now where they're wanting to build is, there's, you know, there's, it's, it's flat, there's nothing.
Now, when we did the lighting ordinance, was that just for the Lake Wiley small area?
No, it's the entire county.
That's the entire, that's, okay, so your light pollution has to mean stay on your property? I know it doesn't always.
I was going to say you should see the hotel in the corner.
They have to build mound, landscape mound, I agree, I agree with that. You've got a landfill right across the street that didn't bother them.
Well, it's across the highway.
It's right there.
It's across the highway.
You'd be, you'd be very happy with the progress they've done. They'd be above, they'd be way over and above the call of duty, but they have to do it on the fair, fair amount. They'd be much higher than they're.
I wish we could have some representation of that, or some idea of the type of, of, of business that would be there. I guess that's my, my biggest concern right now, is you really, I mean, you really can't give us specifics.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Have, have we called for a motion again?
About a second time.
Gotcha.
Do we have a motion? After we have a motion and a second, you can do more discussion. You said the.
Yeah, I don't know how to make the motion that I want to make.
Do you want to put conditions on it?
I want to know more specifics before I vote on it.
Could you do a motion to defer?
You can defer it, would the developer be willing to have some sort of condition that would allow for extra buffering? Something like that, or? Like the landscape buffer, or business hours, you know, something along the, would they be comfortable with something like that?
I can't speak for them, but I don't know why they, why they wouldn't be, I mean, they, yeah, they don't, they don't have.
So if we said, you know, no business after 9 o'clock, something like that?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, to cut in again. At this point, what, what we're dealing with is a rezoning request. So I think the things that are being pointed out right now are issues that might be addressed later when the applicant, if they got rezoned. What conditions could maybe be put in place, depending on what structure they put on that parcel?
But if we approve the rezoning without any conditions, then you can request that they do extra buffering or hours, but they don't have to.
Can't counsel, can't counsel put, have them put restrictions, can't they request that restrictions get brought up if it gets to that?
Sure, they can add conditions, yes. You could always state your concerns here in your motion, and then counsel could then, during their review process, add their conditions with the applicant.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Yes, sir, you.
Just for the record, I'm a big fan of when you all change your, whatever, however you can charter or whatever, to allow for rezones with conditions. I think that's, I think, I'm a big fan, I think that's a positive.
Do we have a motion?
I'm prepared to make one, but I'll yield to you unless you want to.
I'm sure you will, you will, hopefully.
Probably not.
All right, I make a motion to approve the rezoning as, as, as stated by staff. Certainly there is a concern regarding the buffering and other things that it be noted in the approval, the concerns that's coming from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, do we have a second? I'll second that. Any further discussion? So now that concern will go with the motion to counsel so they can put buffering or hours of operation, things like that into it. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Say, do we need to make that sort of itemized, or is it? Say, do we need to make that sort of itemized, or is it straightforward, from what we've been discussing?
You mentioned the buffers, so I know that, but we can also add things to that.
So let me ask a question. With those conditions, are we including hours of operation in there too?
I think, speaking to me since I made the motion, I think I've been very clear that I don't think the government should be involved in private businesses and how they operate. And I think what's going to happen is, they're going to develop the land, then go to the market and see who wants to rent the property. And so that puts a, that reduces the value of their property tremendously. Montreal Belton wants to rent from them, but Montreal Belton could only be open from nine to five. So I'm not prepared to go that far. But I do have a respect for the fact that residential properties and stuff over there, the buffer, light pollution and those types of things. But I'm not, I'm not willing to go that far in my motion.
I'm not willing to go that far as hours operations either, so...
Okay.
But I think for buffering, lighting, and those things that won't disturb the residences, that's fair enough, but that's as far as I'm willing to go with my motion.
Any further discussion? Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, that motion passes. On to item three.
All right, this item next in front of you is a text amendment for the Lake Wiley overlay and the temporary prohibition of new development. As you are aware, we have a, currently on our ordinance that we do not allow apartments, townhomes, and condominiums in Lake Wiley overlay, and that is set to expire at the end of this year. It was our intention to have RECODE done and adopted by the end of the year. That's not going to happen, it'll fall into next year. So because of that, we have to extend that deadline until March 1st, 2022, to still prohibit apartments, townhomes, and condominiums within Lake Wiley overlay.
Okay, so that would be extended until March 1st?
That's correct.
Okay, and we're assuming it'll be, I would assume it'll be done by then? Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Any questions or comments on the tracking sheet? All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I have...
Oh, questions, yes. That's right, sorry, thank you. There were a couple of questions for next month's meeting on the rezoning. Do you want us to adjourn and ask those questions after the meeting, or do...
For next month's meeting on...
On the rezoning code that we deferred?
You mean RECODE?
RECODE, right.
What were the questions, what would they be? Like...
Debbie, you had a question?
We're going to have them at our next meeting. We will have the presentation to actually hopefully recommend approval at the next planning commission meeting.
Okay, so the items that we had concerns over, will they be addressed?
So what we will do is prepare a memo. Some of the things were very straightforward, and we can go ahead and address it right away. There are some of the things that were a little bit more complicated, that we will provide you a memo in response to what your concerns were.
Okay, so one thing I have a question on, and I'm going to apologize that I didn't take the four-inch binder and try to find the answer, but I know that you, I hope you have the answer on the...
We'll need to stop that, it's not part of the agenda to have that discussion here tonight. So I just want to give you an update for next, what to expect at our next meeting.
Okay.
I know we've talked about this for a while, but I would like to just, somehow, if we can put this on the record, we as the planning commission would like to have a joint workshop with counsel, at their convenience, of course. But I just want to put it on the record here, that we all...
Thank you.
If you want to vote on it, or whoever you want to...
Well, it's not on the agenda, so I don't think we can vote on it. But yeah, I think we've all kind of expressed that interest, so if we could do that, that would be great. On that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?